We are going to call this, uh, this meeting to order. This is the first budget, uh, public budget hearing of the town of Indian River Shores, noticed for 5:01 PM this Saturday, uh, this Thursday, September 16, 2025. Uh, we're calling the meeting to order. Uh, we are going to start with the invocation and, uh, thankfully, we have, uh, Vice, uh, excuse me, Mayor, uh, Mr. Carroll's invocation, which I will read. Uh, I could not improve upon it. And, uh, some of the words in here are particularly meaningful, given the events of last week. "We are thankful for this town and its residents. We are grateful for all who work for the betterment of our community and all who serve on its behalf. Let those who work here and those who serve here be ever mindful of the town's vision and mission statement. Grant this council the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people, personal peace in our lives and joy in our task. Amen." And particularly, uh, poignant are those words about working in harmony and listening to each other. So, um, if you'll join us in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Janice, if you can kindly call the roll.
Mayor Foley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alwater?
Here.
Councilman Altieri?
Here.
Let the record show, all members are present, with the exception of Councilmember Dane and Councilmember Carol.
Right, and, uh, we are expecting Councilmember Dane, so at the appropriate point, if he should, uh, enter, uh, Town Attorney, we can, uh, uh, make a notation of that in the record, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, item two is the discussion of the tentative millage rate and budget. Um, item A, the town of Indian River Shores tentatively proposes an aggregate millage rate of 1.2810 per $1,000 for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Is there any discussion from council on item 2A?
No.
All right, item 2B, the tentative millage rate of 1.2810 is necessary to fund the expenses included in the budget and is 4.51% higher than the rollback rate of 1.2257. So it's a reduction in the mil rate, but it's still a bit higher than the rollback rate. Is there any discussion on item 2B? There being none, we'll move to 2C. The 2025-2026 tentative general fund budget is $10,430,738, which is 3.77% lower than last year. We should all be very proud of that. Is there any discussion on lowering the budget?
No.
Okay. Item 2D, the other funds in the 2025-2026 budget are tentatively set as follows. One, Roads and Offstate Drainage Fund is $114,200. Two, Solid Waste Special Assessment Fund is $337,329. And three, Planning, Zoning, and Building Fund is $955,876. Is there any discussion on any of these items? There being none, um, we do not have, uh, we do not have a vote on this yet.
No, sir.
Uh, we just have the discussion. There is no discussion from council at this point. Is there any public comment? Any members of the public who would like to comment on the aforementioned items?
Judge Dane.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we do hack and see Judge Dane is coming in.
All right, let's, uh, let's pause for just a few seconds to let Judge Dane, um, work his way to the podium, Councilman Dane, rather. And in the interim, we will wait for public comment.
With bated breath.
And I will note, we have one less, uh, member of the public here last year than we did, uh, this year than we did last year.
Have we received any written public comment? Occasionally in past years, we have.
We have not.
Okay.
I receive verbal comments, uh, in the nature of, "Good job, guys. Attaboy."
Yep.
Um, so, uh, all positive.
Same here. I'm gonna set a mic up for him. Would you, would you like a mic set up down there? Okay.
Okay. You sit there. Mr. Mayor, of course, with Councilman Dane's presence now here, uh, our form has changed, so a majority vote now would require three votes instead of just the two previously that we just had.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
Can I call John?
No problem.
No worries, no worries. Um, that's right. And, uh, for the, for the second budget meeting, though, we do need a supermajority, correct?
That's correct.
So we'll need, we'll need, uh...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Test, one, two, one, two, three.
Let's move to item four, which is the adoption. Uh, Mr. Town Attorney, why don't you read the proposed resolution?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council, this is Resolution 2509, a resolution of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, adopting the tentative levy of ad valorem taxes of 1.2810 mils for fiscal year 2025, 2026, providing for funding operating expenses during fiscal year 2025, 2026, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Once again, is there any comment? If there's no comment, we can proceed to a roll call vote.
Uh, we do need a motion.
I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. If you can call the vote, please.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
Councilmember Dane?
Aye.
Mr. Town Attorney, if you can kindly read adoption, uh, of subparagraph B of item four.
Yes, sir. This is Resolution 25-10, a resolution of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Thank you. Once again, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we can proceed to a roll call vote after a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
Councilmember Dane?
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion passes unanimously.
All right, there being no further business at this first bub, Town Budget Meeting, um, we will proceed, uh, to adjourn this meeting and go directly to the, uh, the special call meeting following as soon as, uh, tape keeps rolling. Thank you.
You guys ready?
Everybody okay? No break needed? Good. All right, we will call to order, uh, the special call Town Council meeting this Tuesday, September 16, 2025. Um, we will dispense with, uh, the call to order, the invocation, and the pledge of allegiance, but if you can call the roll, please.
Mayor Foley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Here.
Councilmember Dane?
Here.
Let the record show, all members are present, with the exception of Councilmember Carol.
If there are no, uh, requests to reorder, delete items or add items to the agenda, if there's a motion to approve, the agenda in a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we can have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item three, comments from the public regarding the agenda items. Are there any comments from the public? There being none? Are there any councilmember items?
None.
There being none, we will go to discussion with possible or probable action, uh, that is the approval of ordinance number 582, the five-year capital improvement plan, that's a first reading. Mr. Town Attorney, can you kindly read the magic language?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, this is ordinance number 582, an ordinance of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, to adopt the five-year capital improvement program, 2026 to 2020, 2030, as part of the town's comprehensive plan in accordance with mandates set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing a business impact estimate, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for Scrivener errors, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading.
Terrific, and first of all, thank you to staff for, uh, the great job in putting together the, uh, the agenda items and the summaries. It certainly makes, uh, council's job easy when we have, uh, such good materials to prepare us for these, uh, for these important decisions. Uh, if there's any discussion on item, uh, 5A, we can have it now. If not, uh, we can move to a roll call vote and a motion to approve in a second.
Motion, uh, motion to approve the ordinance?
Second.
Uh, if you can call the roll, please.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
Councilmember Dane? Let the motion, let the record show, the motion passes unanimously.
Terrific, thank you. All right, we'll move to item 5B, um, where we have a presentation on our, uh, comprehensive plan amendment, and, uh, thank you very much for making the trip. Sorry, thank you for making the trip. Thank you for making the trip from Tallahassee, and, uh, we'll, we'll turn the floor over to you before we, uh, uh, we hit you with, uh, you know, a bevy of questions. We should have you out of here by 7:00 PM.
Well, thank you very much.
Hadley, just real quickly, Council, if I could just introduce, uh, this is Hadley Peterson, uh, she's, uh, works with us.
My apologies.
She's with Kim Lee Horn. Um, I've been working with Hadley, uh, she has not filed for a restraining order yet. I call her regularly, email her all the time. We've been working with her and her team, uh, in Tallahassee, uh, and I think you met Ally previously here, and, uh, I just want to thank her for being here, and, uh, they, they definitely watch out for the best interest of the town in terms of our requirements for compliance and, uh, in a lot of these, uh, in a lot of these areas, and I just wanted to mention that and introduce her for the purposes of the presentation.
Thank you, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Harpring. My, uh, my apologies, uh, your, your, your reputation precedes you, at least with me and some of the others up here, but, uh, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Nice to meet you all, Hadley Peterson. Like, uh, the town manager mentioned, you've met Ally Palmer, who I work with, um, here today to do a brief presentation on the comprehensive plan update. We, I was here yesterday for the LPA meeting where they recommended the transmittal to this, um, body, but just going to briefly go through this, and if there's any questions, feel free to stop me. Um, it should be short. So, the comprehensive plan update is required by Florida statute, Chapter 163. This is done every eight years. You have to evaluate your plan, let the state know if anything has changed in your circumstances, requiring an update to the plan. In the case of Indian River Shores, there have been several statutes that passed between the session in 2020, when this plan was last updated, to 2024, that we needed to account for, and so we sent the ear letter saying we would be updating this plan, and so the amendments here before you today are in response to that. The comprehensive plan is governed by Chapter 163, and then it informs the town's land development code, which, a caveat in the way, uh, that this order went, in, in the case of the town, we worked with, um, Janice Jem and staff, uh, two years ago to update the land development code, and so there are some changes in the document here today, some amendments that just update the comprehensive plan to now match what's actually going on in your land development code. So for the most part, these are compliance and consistency type revisions, amendments to your plan. Uh, I know you all know very well, but the comprehensive plan is essentially the guiding North Star for decisions. Um, in the town, it holds the goals, objectives, and policy, so really, this is what we're looking at in terms of a long-range plan for the town. In the case of this plan, there's a 10-year planning horizon of 2035 and a 20-year planning horizon of 2045, so the amendments are taking into account, you know, looking ahead for those next 20 years. Uh, the objectives that you find within these amendments are really the compass for guiding decision-making, and the policies are essentially, you know, the playbook for the capital improvements and community initiatives that the town will undertake during that time. What this looks like are nine comprehensive plan elements. All of the elements in the comprehensive plan for the town are required by statute, so this covers everything from future land use, housing and transportation, to the flip side of conservation, coastal management. Um, some elements are longer or shorter. Uh, the future land use really is the North Star of the whole document. That is where it tells you what your lands can have on them and where those are located. For this update, no future land use designations have been changed, so that piece of the plan is, it remains as it has been since 2020. Just so you know where we're at in the process, like I mentioned, this is driven by Florida Commerce, um, the state agency, so last fall, we did what is called the EER, which is the evaluation and appraisal, so looking at all the statutes that have changed since 2020, what do we need to update, update to make sure we are in compliance? We put it in a table and send it to the state so they know what we're going to do. We also went through all of your existing policies and noted any that needed to be updated due to changes, um, in how the town operates, or that needed to be updated to comply with what your land development code regulates on a day-to-day basis when it comes to building official development, et cetera. Uh, and through the winter and spring, we worked on the DIA, which is just data inventory and analysis, so taking into account all the good work that the town's doing, all the good work from the county, MPO, and Water Management District, and putting it there. Um, every policy that we recommend amending ties back to a data point, um, that's required by statute. And then this past spring and summer, worked on updating the goals, objectives, and policies to what you, um, have been given for this evening, the version that's been put before you. As part of that, year-based updates, like I mentioned, these are statutory changes. The biggest, I would say, three things that have happened in legislation between 2021 and 2024, um, they introduced the two planning year horizons, so the 10 and the 20 that I mentioned before, it was just 20, so there was no need to, you know, make sure the 10 year was in there, so updating for that, and accordingly, also making sure the level of service required for different infrastructure is in place to support that growth through those time horizons. Additionally, the septic-to-sewer bill passed through the Senate and House, and so that language and the work that the town's done as it relates to the BMAP, et cetera, has been included in this, the vulnerability assessment, et cetera. And then the Live Local Act, um, passed as well, um, doesn't have as much impact in this town, there's not commercial and industrial land for it to impact, but accounting for all of these as part of statutory updates. With that, there are some just contextual cha-changes that have, you know, happened, um, population projections required by statute, so we use a source by the University of Florida, it's the Bureau of Economic and Business Research, uh, they provide a low, medium, and high range. We went with the medium range because that's in line with the type of growth that you've been experiencing over the last decade.
Okay, I, you know, a question, you, I guess partially answered that, but to what extent are these customized? Because we're built out, or darn close, and given the demographic of, of this, uh, population, probably, uh, not gonna have a, a lot of babies here. So these numbers strike me as somewhat on the high side, given the unique characteristics of the town.
Yes, so this research is done for local jurisdiction by the University of Florida, so this takes into account the amount of lands available to develop. This assumes, you know, there's not going to be a lot of new development, but we're going to see very subtle redevelopment, and again, this is 800 residents distributed over 20 years, so in the case where there may be a single-family home today, it may be a town home or, you know, something in the future, and it assumes there's going to be slight density, but it's not assuming, um, lands are going to be rezoned or land use designations changed.
Okay.
But to the Vice Mayor's point, just to put a finer point on this, that these are, you know, calculations that are done based on, you know, formulas, and they're not, they're not customized, so these could be wildly inaccurate, you know, you could, you could conceivably also have a shift to, um, you know, um, larger homes with fewer occupants, so we're, this, this is just, you know, this is just a statistical, uh, you know, best guess thrown out by people who probably have never set foot in the town.
It's the best guess based on town data, though, so it's based on town census data, um, from the last 50 years extrapolated over time. So this is based on what the town and the census tracks and blocks within the town have seen, so again, yes, very well, it could be a best guess, that's, you know, why we go in the medium, we're not assuming higher-low based on the way development has happened here. You know, we did discuss going on the low end, but, um, Indian River County actually uses the high for their comprehensive plan update, so, you know, it's kind of one of those safe-to-assume-meet-in-the-middle-type.
Well, they, they have a lot of empty ground.
Yes.
So, do you recall what the difference between this number and what the low would have been?
Um, it's about 124 residents.
Okay.
So not, you know, statistically significant.
Yeah, to be blatantly obvious, uh, for the public, to the extent that, you know, uh, anybody, anybody listens to this, uh, we're, uh, my comment was just to calm the public down, that we are not planning to have development, we are not planning to have growth. This is, this is not something that, um, that is part of our, um, our aspiration, this is just a, a number that somebody, you know, picked out and said, "This is, this is what the trends look like." These numbers do tend to trend higher, um, in, in a community like ours, because, you know, as the Vice Mayor pointed out, we are pretty built out, so if you're taking a look at the, the development from 15, 20 years ago, when we've had no less than five new developments, you know, between the Strand, Blue, um, Surfside, and, uh, two others that are probably, uh, well, they don't have to vote for me because I'm term limited, so I've, I've, I've forgotten their names, uh, but the, um, you know, the, the chances are the trend's gonna be, gonna be much, much lower, so I just want to, to any members of the public, we are not, we are not actively recruiting to have a higher density, okay? Just want to make that clear, unless anybody disagrees with me up here, which I assume you don't, so, okay.
What's, uh, Hadley, what's the point of the benchmark? So, if the benchmark shows, let's say, not an 8.3% increase, but rather a 12% increase, is that supposed to trigger some, some response in the comprehensive plan?
When you say, when you say benchmark, are you talking about the projected growth rate you see here? So, the point of this is to assume, in a scenario where you had this much growth, that you would have a plan for infrastructure in place to support that if it were to happen. So, the way that we do our level of service calculations is based off of this number, so that we can ensure that your roadways would not have more traffic on it if this were to happen, your water, you know, even though it's provided through the city of Vero Beach, they would still have capacity to serve Indian River Shores and meet the expectations that you guys have today if this were to happen.
But it's not a, it's not, it doesn't trigger an objective responsibility. It trigger, it's a, it's a flare, saying, "Expect this growth."
Yes.
And as you expect this growth, give active consideration to the impact on the comprehensive flare.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So with that, um, actually segues perfectly into transportation. Um, the only updates really in this element were to put into policy actions that are already occurring today in terms of collaboration and working with FDOT, the county, and MPOs. This, um, the level of service calculations were updated in here, but no level of service was changed, and then we also updated to include additional policies around ensuring safe, what is called non-motorized travel, which is just bike and pedestrian, to make sure that we're working with the appropriate agencies to provide for that within the boundaries of the town. When it comes to housing, uh, as you all know, the housing here today is largely single-family detached. Uh, we use projections from Schimberg Center for Housing Studies to look at trends in building permits, to see what type of demographics are expected, so of those 800 people that, you know, could call Indian River Shores home in 2045, the idea is that those are projected to be mostly town-home type development with some single-family detached as well. And so the housing element, um, again, very few changes in here from the version you have today, uh, there's not the need to account for a Live Local Act the same way that other jurisdictions have to, but provisions have been put into the comp plan, uh, for that, and then there would have been no changes to the property rights element since that was just adopted in 2023 to meet statute requirements, so no changes have been done for that element. Public facilities and capital improvements is one element, this is where all the level of service standards are housed. Additional policies were added here based on the septic-to-sewer vulnerability assessment projects, so items like complying with the Indian River Lagoon Protection Program to reduce the town's pollutant load are now housed in here. This is where the capital improvements, um, the CIP that you just discussed gets housed and tucked in here, and as you update that, it would get replaced as part of this element. But the policies within this element are what drive the type of work that's being done here in the town when it comes to roadway projects that include stormwater in that, the septic-to-sewer, the curbing efforts that, um, the town is working on with the county and other agencies right now, so the policies in here provide for that type of work down the line. In coastal management, the biggest update required by statute is related to peril of flood requirements, and then the other updates as it relates to protecting and restoring beach and dune systems and coastal development have been updated. Uh, the land development code was updated prior to the comp plan update, like I mentioned, so this took into account the coastal high-hazard area coastal development regulations and ordinances that you already follow in the town, um, that meet statute requirements and protect your coast and natural resources, so those have been incorporated into the comprehensive plan, and then there's been additional detail required in terms of post-disaster response with the county, so the policy's been updated, um, to align with the counties to ensure an under-12-hour hurricane evacuation time, so that's all housed in the coastal element, or coastal management element. Uh, conservation is preservation of natural resources. Again, this, for the most part, just puts into policy actions that are already being undertaken by the town and their partners. Um, additionally, uh, statute now requires you look at air and energy as part of this, so there have been policies added, um, to continue to look at air pollution and, um, energy resources in collaboration with other agencies like the county. Um, recreation and open space, uh, the biggest difference here is in your 2020 version, there's about 10 categories that provide, you know, we're gonna have X many parks per population, we're gonna have X many tra, miles of trail, X many tennis courts. It's not required by statute to go into that amount of detail, so we've replaced it with just a, um, acreage of recreation and open space and added policies that that can be provided for through HOAs or private development. Right now, the burden's on the town alone, so we have added policies that provide for that, as well as providing for working with the county, city of Vero Beach, et cetera, that the residents can achieve that access to recreation and open space through entities that are not just the town alone. Intergovernmental coordination is basically the clearinghouse for all the work that goes on behind the scenes to ensure that we're being a good partner to other agencies in the area, so this includes continuing joint planning... So, this includes continuing joint planning with adjacent jurisdictions. New policies have been added in terms of required by the BMAP. So, now, there's a policy in there about holding biannual coordination meetings with the city of Vero Beach and Indian River County to support compliance with the Chapter 2023 169 and that BMAP or Basin Management Action Plan. So, that's a new policy in there. And in part of, in this element, all your existing inter-local agreements are housed in here and kind of document the way that you've been a partner to other agencies and jurisdictions previously. And policies largely, again, go unchanged in this element, except for to document what's actually being done operationally with the town. And then, that...
That's a question from the vice mayor.
Going back to your second bullet point.
Yep.
You go backwards. So, biannual, that's every other year? I always get confused between biannual and semiannual. It's supposed to be every other year?
This is, yes, this is every other year as required by the Basin Management Action Plan.
Okay. And so, what is the form that they're supposed to take? Is that specified?
That's not specified in here, and I think that's intentionally so because, so that we can't be out of...
Staff-to-staff meetings qualify.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because the county has had meetings with their governing body, with the governing bodies of Vero Beach and Sebastian. That's why I asked the question, so...
And intentionally left so that we can be compliant with it through staff action.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any questions? Nope. I just want to thank you for a comprehensive job on the comprehensive plan amendments. And it's, my sense of humor notwithstanding, this is an important task. And I went through all of this carefully, as I'm sure everybody else did. And what impressed me the most was the care that was given to make sure that we don't overpromise, because little by little, we've seen comprehensive plans become enforceable, even though initially, they were never supposed to be enforceable legal documents. They were aspirational. Now, they're being used in court to say, you said in your plan that you were going to have 23 tennis courts per 1,000 residents. And, you know, it's, if the Planning and Zoning Commission decides, well, we don't want to have two tennis courts here, it's too noisy and doesn't comply, we could be in a pickle. So, I want to thank you, and I want to thank staff for working very hard on this to make sure that this was very carefully done. We can't, the days are gone when we can look at this unfunded mandate as, let's just check the box and get it on its way. We have to really pay attention to it. So, thank you for the wonderful job you did. In a pickle is an Irish term, which means a boatload of trouble.
I thought you were referring to a pickle court.
Oh, I, you know, I'm not that clever. The pickleball would have been great. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Is there any further discussion? If there isn't, we can move to a roll call vote on the approval of the first reading after it's read by the town attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council, this is ordinance number 583, an ordinance of the Town of Indian River Shores, Florida, with attachments, amending the comprehensive plan of Indian River Shores, providing for the amendment to the text of various elements in the future land use map series of the comprehensive plan resulting from the directives of the town council after the completion of the evaluation and appraisal review, providing for a business impact estimate, providing for Scrivener's errors, the repeal of all conflicting ordinances, codification, and an effective date. This is the first reading.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, is there a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. A motion by the vice mayor and a second by Councilman Altieri. Can you call the roll for the vote, please?
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
Councilmember Dane?
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Call to the audience. Okay. No one out there? Thank you very much for your attention. And we will now adjourn this meeting. We will see you next week for our early, earlier-than-usual meeting. And we have a budget meeting on that as well, correct? Second reading. All right. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a wonderful...